Welcome to our August planning meeting. Thank you very much for coming out on such a nice warm evening. I'm sure you'd be rather doing other things, but it's great to see a number of you here. Planning meetings have suffered in the past, so really pleased to have a presentation we have. So first item on the agenda is 2552, declarations of any disposable opportunity. Have demand, oh sorry. Getting ahead of your time.
Upcoming on the late planning applications, reference 829830. It's not a community interest because I don't own the property, but my family do. But our next door to it, so I might stay out of this conversation.
Your interest has been noted, thank you. 25622, apologies for absence.
Yes, Councilor Rotto and Councilor.
So then we move on to 25722, minutes of the committee meeting held on 12th of July, which were approved by the council on 26th of July. Happy that they are through the record of our last meeting. Three, three, yes. Move on to 25822, our planning applications to consider. So first one, I think, got a crossway, late two.
And this was a retrospective application. So they have put in a garden wall inside an existing fence line to open out the back garden property.
Comments?
Thank you. There's a number of councils do this one every day. And actually, it's beautifully built. There's gorgeous coverage to it. It doesn't affect any of the visual displays and as it's rightly stated by the plaque, it's within the boundaries of the property and it's an extreme being keeping because just along the road, further on the other side, there is almost an identical wall. So it's not outkeeping within the area, so I recommend this committee's.
How was it?
Don't mean, but that's not really the same.
Whilst we're looking at that with Mike's.
But also, there's no objections from highways.
I was going to really make the same point and ask the question. And I can't, unfortunately, I didn't, I haven't seen it, I confess. But is it on, is it on a public road or a public pathway?
The public path, which is demonetized by the rail network.
If, if it is, I'm, I'm, I guess too high. I don't, I don't know. I'm hoping we can find it. I think it's 24, we've got two metres stepping down to 1.68 in the third section. It's two metres at the highest.
Yeah.
So six, six.
So it's pretty keeping actually of other existing walls than the front.
Number two is not on the corner. If it was, I'd be most sympathetic because people often find you on the corner. You mostly be gardens at the front and you want, I think people are entitled to privacy. But I do like to see the front left open so that it's not totally boring walking past.
There isn't a huge amount of open space in front of the property. This is to the side of it.
And what road is that? What, the road there up is on the second, what road, because this is what road?
That's, that's.
That is right proper.
Okay. So I think what we've tended to do in the past is look to where front gardens are to have that open area to, so you don't think you're going through, there's a cap top thing. But obviously, back gardens is usually a little failing from this beginning past block. It's not a sign we want to put back down.
Yeah, and it's not my word, but I do drive past it every day because I'm over fields. And if we're planning with you, I don't think there's probably an issue behind this having objected. And it's not a judgment. And my making sense from purely an aesthetic view, and we'll all get a different position about that. And I write, I like the crossway where it's slightly open and you have quite a lot of front gardens and green space along the main road there. My only concern would be if everybody did what they've done here along the crossway, it would completely change the character because it was a very urban sort of closed type feel to this day. And it's a nice estate incident, you have to, I think it's ugly, but that's just my own personal view. And I would be really concerned if that was adopted, sort of wide spell or study. But as I say, if you, I don't think there are.
Any further comments?
I could just come back on, cancel the journey's point. Actually, it's in keeping with what's existing there. They've taken time to ensure that bricks match the existing structure. There is a wall behind it, which you can see, which is only just coming out a little bit. And as I stated earlier, on the other side of the road, not 50 yards, there is exactly the same kind of wall built and that abuts directly to the football. They've retained the front space. This is an extension to the side of the garden. I see no reason not to support it.
Two.
retrospective, they need a planning mission.
I believe that is correct. Mike, did I see you come back?
I just wanted to come back and I sympathise with what Jane said.
I do think it'd be good if we could establish that, you know, but it's a British idea that back gardens is one thing, but front gardens should in principle be in some way or other.
I think this is, you know, the plan, what they do is basically bringing part of the area from their front garden into a back garden, which causes us the issue if we're setting our policies. If you have a normal street view, you'd have a front and back of some of the houses on an angle. And the point where their front and back garden starts is the.
Again, remind me. There's a football park on the side against the wall of the fence. There's a football park that goes along. Yeah, so in that case.
I really, I was trying to be brief, I'd say front and back is actually where the public would like to go. Not to go at the back.
Because they're looking at the orientation of the house itself. It is an angle and their, their back garden. The entirety of the city will be the existing walls, it's set back a bit further.
If we're minded to not object, could I suggest that we compromise like by saying that in principle, we like the idea that front gardens should be more accessible to the public view? If we do, I mean, we may not.
So I don't want you to have some words and make that comment as an extra one.
As a new garden, just in principle, what can this committee actually do?
We can object on pure planning grounds. So we're supportive, object or wish to make no comment. Generally, we will have a view one way or another. We can make further comments to back up whatever objection to it is on specific grounds, why projecting. But we can also throw in other bits together.
So we can make further recommendations.
We can make some comments, but you know, they're not right. Because on planning grounds, there's nothing there for them to go for. But it's, we keep going, you know, my favourite is conservation area, something like that. So where we have things like a shop front, which I can build more chemist. There's no planning plans or anything like that.
And just to say that the, the time to do that is when they bring the local firm up for review, which is up soon, isn't it? And that is something we can put into the town centre considerations.
So because it's one retrospective, it's already happened, rather than us objecting to it, which would mean they'd have to take it down. And our objection is that it's a brick wall and we asked it buttoned to it, but alongside it. Was that part of this committee's remit?
It's not planning reason to or object. You could, yeah.
So we could ask.
It would be, yeah. Yeah, so that's good. We're looking ready for black or white to give them a steer. Subsequent comments, you know, like Mike's saying about that or planting and that can be made, but these wouldn't probably be.
They don't take any account.
Blank.
Just to be careful.
Anyway.
So are we going to support her however in principle? TTC would like front gardens to be accessible to, to be open to the public.
Front gardens to be, yeah.
Whether you say open to the public or anything.
I'm not offering.
On view.
On view. Yes. We're confused.
I'm not even sure about that, actually. That's a problem as well, doesn't it? Selling tickets to.
I mean, you know, just going to point again, I'm sorry for the lady, but if that were a fence, which was done to keep animals in and out, I'd be perfect because you can see through it. Typically, it's a metal one. It's a fact that it's solid, that there doesn't appear to be.
So what can we do with that rectus better plan? If we don't like it, we object because we should have put your planning mission in the first place.
Well, we obviously on the.
Then they would go to Breckland and say.
Possibly you're saying, well, you have.
So we do have a proper figure policy.
There is that option that Breckland can do, obviously. We really can't sort these if they went, if we chose to object, they went with that objection that they could take.
Yes, so we, I'd expect your planning in the past over four, et cetera, et cetera. We have an issue with it. I'm, I'm, I think we should.
We are, so you're happy we're going to be supportive, but we would like to make comments in principle.
I'm going to chip in.
View and we can ask for Breckland's thoughts or considerations of front gardens.
Yeah, I'll check the, I'll check the plan because it will be in there.
Yeah. Thank you. So then 822, Elm Road, six storey rear extension.
That's the location map for you. So that's the existing. And so the areas that look at, there is red. Is the. New. So all that, there's been no objections. The only comment is the tree has asked to have a tree so then impact assessment undertaken. That's just probably regular comments.
Are we to support?
No complaints from neighbours, so any neighbours don't want?
No, there's been nothing on that, no comments.
Support them? On to 0837, which is the Palace, Ford Street, internal operations.
Yeah, so these are all in the kitchen area. There's. That's the right. So.
Please, yeah.
Have I or have I? Yeah, a minute. Have I got my number? There we go, just having a bit of madness at the moment. So, because I want to look at it for a minute. So that's the location map for you. The model of the property. So this is what it is currently. So the areas of interest around the green dot is. And then this is what they're going to do internally. So they're going to relocate boiler, the hot water cylinder into the basement under the utility room, as well as to create a utility room pantry and what I've given layout, including the removal of the partition between the ground, between the two rooms. On the ground floor wet room amendments will be made to create a working wet room floor. There's no changes to externals of the building. So there's no changes to. So it's all internal works.
We had to support that historic buildings.
Yeah, no, there's, there's no objections from the historical. I think it'd be, I know that probably quite well, I think the partition really doesn't add much up. It's actually improving the space, you know. A bigger area, faster moving boiler into the cell. I think this is a space now, no, and the wet room, they never work properly, so.
I'm to support. Yeah, thank you. So 08018, Dunstec, six storey front porch extension.
Okay. So can you go those numbers, the location map for you? So this is the existing ground floor. And this is the changes that they are. So you can see on the bottom left, one that's double edged is the extension. So there's no additional comments on that one.
I'm to support.
Think of it, because that is on a corner, there's no building behind it to be 42. So that extra promontory causes there to turn.
It's a corner.
So let me go back to my moment of madness briefly.
Or is that 25922, late applications then?
So, Macdon Street. Yeah, I've probably just been terribly organising for all of you now from the main corridor. Yes.
So 25922, planning applications, but straight to consider.
Okay, so it's a kitchen roof replacement and entrance gates. The HBO said I can confirm the application submission and reflect in form of the application discussions that were held with the application earlier this year. So he confirmed that no mal deduction to the proposed work. However, on a point detail, he would like to suggest an alternative roof line is considered. As the current fellows, conservation roof line has significantly altered since the room's due several years ago. And the original version was of a slimmer section of the profile and comparable to historic examples. The current version is basically, basically with a dress up, it's not as good. So he's basically given them a link to where they can find the original valance roof lights as part of the conservation.
So it's not visible from the street at all? So we're happy to support.
So that's 8298. Support it, I mean, the house really needs some, you know, TLC. Hasn't had much spending over the years. Need the change of issue of added values for family. And there's not a waste of space there. And the site 812 Grove Lane is very ugly and they do there to improve that. And the fact it's going to be an electric gate, so it won't cause any traffic issues. And it will free up parking on the conservation street itself.
I'm to support.
Hey, I don't know. Just one more. That is, yes, so this is. So this is a change of use from offices to residential on three houses. So this was the, what is currently the Anglia House Business Centre, which is 24 to 26. So. So that's location. That's the sign. So there's no, so they've got existing parking. There is no protected species, there's no important habitats or biodiversity features. And there's no, because of geological conservation either. And there's going to be one big empty. Looking for the materials. For the. The materials that were working to exist. It's a market housing, not full of housing.
Well, I think it's repurposed existing building rather than doing too much to it. It's your coming past.
Just they comment on one bin per house. How they could recycle if they only have one bin per house? I have two, my property, a black to green bin. I think they need that, black and a green bin each, so that they can recycle. And this baby, you know, is a suspect.
Is it a little that they, is it their recycling, are they putting bags?
There's no mention of that.
Because didn't we have that about the last one we had, that's the old things? That they've got one, one certain, one of the things is bags that they put out. It's not actually bins.
We talked about, but can I just clarify on this? You mentioned how many units, because in the press it's saying it's four one bedroom units plus two two bedroom.
Then this is.
Two two.
It says how many is. So total proposed residential units is three.
Down, that's it. One quarter five bedroom and two two.
That's right, yeah. One forty five, two.
To the press.
You said three.
So, two.
Okay, so we are considering three townhouses then.
Why are we playing show and game store? Right, bottom right.
Oh yeah, the six.
There's six.
Yeah, three units, six units, that's fine.
Yeah.
Well spotted. So one bin.
Off the bit.
Not coming to say.
Give me that great parking. Which part of it is a dead bear, buddy?
We're flying on point, you're exiting.
Potentially, you can have one vehicle, a bedroom there. Just on the side, Mike, but it's up to you. And just on the bin store, you know, the mat there, it says Rich Street. And that's a very private issue to our centre and it'd be very visible. It's real public, a bin store, you know, on the side. If it's, I don't know if they're going to put it in some sort of, you know, bin store on a container and the wheel of bins out, or what they intend to do. So nine sixteen bins up on there will have the same issues around the corner here in the old freshers. Maybe in terms of location or screening of some sort.
Like comments for screen, probably is the best place to, because the front is just like to the road.
For files to get into the store.
Yeah. In terms of parking, people know the site, there is an access there, it does fly out at all. The exit, so concerned, the three houses is probably, I would say adequate. I was concerned, but I saw in the press that they thought about four one plus two two, looking on Barney. Three townhouses, then probably okay. Any other comments?
I mean, I'll be perfectly honest, I think it's over development. There's one number four, five bedroom townhouse over three floors. Number two, a two bedroom townhouse, two floors. Number three is a two bedroom townhouse over two floors, which are effectively going into the footprint of two old residential buildings. And would appreciate that houses of that era weren't as big as they used to. Whilst there might be extensions a bit out the back, I fear there's no development at the site, personally.
Are we happy to support that view that's over development?
Yes.
Objecting on over development.
Yeah, Dave.
Just a comment well to the plan, there's no, and it said. So I think that is a shame, we're not talking about the plan.
That's a courtyard, yeah.
Well, it's got courtyard, but there's no actually.
A courtyard.
Cultivating. But it's quite a lot back in there, but it's, it is.
Probably the best one to look at.
Is there anything in terms of logical comments? Because that site is quite.
No.
Has been. The nation looks that then to the back.
It's today. And there was a requirement, it's a mathematical work.
Because that's from county.
That's from county.
Test. Yeah.
Yeah.
There will be some draft wrenching, which hopefully will identify anything of interest. We object to overdevelopment.
And so.
So.
Bin store.
Sure. Thank you all. So do we have anything further than that?
No, the only thing I just want to bring up is I had a couple of phone calls today about a particular development that was on the previous month's, which is, and called my sixth, which is for the land adjacent to Old Vicar's Road. And it came through today, I spoke to Breckland and said that we didn't have enough time to look at it. All for people because it was contentious to come and talk about it. So they've deferred it for us to the next sector to enable the house and the residents to have a good look at it.
Is this something I've heard?
Yes. That will send the.
So no two days later, we'll probably have some public coming along next week to give that views on. And then to 26022, decisions are various. That's then 26132, items to be referred to by the partnership. We did have Breckland briefing last week, who's track. A number of points were brought up. Hopefully got some of those points there here, but we do have the opportunity to amend anything there or add to it.
No, no, this is my, my moments of madness.
Pass that round then.
What did you want to go through next?
Well, if you've got, you've got your own.
No, no, this is my name.
So the points that were following the brief, the BDC, reference future effort, the council's requested following topics to be discussed, the planning for referral to GTP. Used to the Mount Road allotment to expand the railway. This was something that came up about, they wanted to repurpose some of the lot of land for a alternative entrance to the offside of the railway station. We as a council have discussed it in the past, but given no decision on that. So I think what we probably would like to see is what they are actually proposing and what land is they, they would require before we can discuss that in any sensible way.
So what I was hoping to do with that was to gather some pertinent questions that we wanted to put forward to, like when I was talking to the officers about it, I was saying, before we even get started, really, we need to know things like how much space do they want? How many parking spaces do they want? How many allotments does that equate to? How many allotments does that equate to? Where do they actually want it to be? Because until we've got those answers to those questions, we can't actually look at the proposal. Because it depends which chunk of the allotments that they want, I guess. So it was thinking about what we want to actually ask them, because I'm going to write to them a letter and say, these are what we want. I've got one and these are the questions that we'd like you to answer for us. Unfortunately, I didn't get anything before our allotment meeting. But, you know, I'll try and get any responses that we get back to these questions as soon as possible.
Thanks.
It's, oh yeah, it's. My, my opinion, well, I need to know more about it, but I'm not very happy with the ideas. I mean, some of it's good, it helps with the train station, everything and all. But it's going to be displacing quite a few allotments. While I can gather around twenty. Lot of those, and that's going to cause some controversy.
Well, I think, I think the last time I looked at it was about three years, wasn't it? Three, four years ago. And it's about ten percent, I think they're looking at about ten percent of the Monford Road.
Yeah, which is not for. Hundred. Yeah.
I, yeah, but personally, I don't think we can discuss without any, without a proposal coming forward to be discussed. Just saying, not generally, we can't make a decision on that. Terry.
One of the updates that came out recently spoke about Biggers Network Rail funding the National Network Rail. To upgrade the station facilities and to affect the build up. And I know the figure of five million pounds. Which would suggest a significant investment in the.
Train facility.
So I think we would be right to just look into it. It's what we don't want to do, it's for us to say absolutely no use to the allotments whatsoever, effectively say no to this investment in the train station. And so we definitely need to consider it. And I think that was quite imminent, that fucking bits network rail, so that very least perhaps they can share that bit with us. So we can see the wider vision to enable us to make this, you know, five million pound investment be really well. We can track this.
Don't know whether that included the bridge because that's a big chunk of it.
Bridge storage and that access to the station.
Dennis and Liz.
But again, we hear a lot of, I think if we can improve our train station, it's very important to that as a whole. But looking to us a lot with things, I mean, if we lose a considerable amount of our allotment there and everything. Are we going to, in which way are we going to be compensated for loss of our land there? And it's going to be a money making scheme for this rail. In that they're going to car parks, they always charge for their car parks and everything. And, and all, I really don't see why separate to lose and to not compensate somewhere.
Van Brothers and Jane.
Even now, if there's spare places in the car park, they still think it's parking in the streets opposite to save on a car. And I'd also like to know what Network Rail are intending to, you know, improve facility station in terms of cost. Because it's more cost effective people to travel down the market and use a train rather than go to set. And it's a lot cheaper, so why is it so expensive to travel to set? You know, it's a considerable difference. And also this is, you know, same with this. I mean, my daughter used to travel on a very frequent basis and ride down the market.
Guaranteed guarantees.
Can we ask for that sort of point to be raised with GTP about pricing? I think that has been talked about, I think reiterating that would be worth what doing. Jane.
I'm glad I brought that point to that pricing, because I did bring him up in others. And that was a really good meeting as well. Meeting that we had, and we had a representative of Network Rail, if I remember rightly. And that's exactly the issue that we had was, you know, the pricing accessibility. There is an alternative train as well, you know, obviously no deal's done and nothing set in stone or anything. But instead of that townhouse being compensated, if it was so minded to, it could actually run and pay car park and actually earn some money out of it. And minimize the impact on the taxpayer reserve, just putting it out.
Yes. Interesting to my. I like the idea of supporting the use of public transport, because it is in some ways very efficient. I think I'd want something back now, I mean, I wonder if there's any possibility for example, Breckland saying in effect negotiating this. We certainly call the British Rail, what are they called this week? I don't know. In other words, if, if that land can be provided for a car parking and indeed a lot of similar ones. They in turn say, okay, we will improve the issue, we will improve something pretty basic and you could start with a bridge. It is, it's getting across that which is increasingly difficult for many people. I don't think we should just hand it over to gift and say, look, this is a car park, perhaps to be very in the station and as you said, making money for somebody else. What will they do to, to make a bar and improve the other parts of the station? Except you could talk about the bridge, you could talk about the lack of refreshments, there's several things. I think, and Terry's right to say that, because the way network, sorry, railway funding goes, it is in pockets. So you wait for your next funding regime round to come through and then you put your thoughts, obviously, by the sound of it, they have put forward. Object for effort, which would include the bridge, members seeing it. And he's right, we asked for a copy of what they do propose, do know what we're talking about.
Could I ask if the access road included in that as well? Because I think, remember on the original one, they wanted for town count to build the access road.
But I don't think we do too much other than ask for a copy of that. We won't give any decision one way or another until we know what to talk about.
Yeah.
We don't own that because. Because it's shared with car users and.
Historically, that was the major route coming up after when the railway routine, it was then located. But I believe that still thoroughfare, which has been adopted by county council.
Yes.
As a thoroughfare, however, they haven't maintained it at all. And whether it sits on counties anyway, I don't know. But historically, the railway was the major road. Well, have a look at the bin, see what it says and what our obligation. Put that as a request. Matter, so next bit was the refurbishment, signal box and updating maps and information at the station. For those that weren't at eighteen, Terry and I, back in on that the signal box getting into a presentable state. We did get a response from, I think it was Jack. To say that signal box has been discussed with Network Rail and Greater Anglet or the council. It's a no go area for any alternative use, so an active track might have signal cabling in and underneath it. The council generally write, push for remedial work, but so far this has not gained any momentum. For example, the box has been physically moved elsewhere in the interest of repurposing, but this is an expensive option. I think what he's losing sign on there is the reason that signal box is listed later than the other elements of the station. Is it because the station buildings form a complete set? So you've got the, the old station buildings and the signal box and the signal box, they felt maintained, the, you know, the right. The other places where you've got standalone signal box, they have been with Brandon, that is, it's example where they're. So I think historically that maintained, I think all we can do is push for it to be put in the presentable state. The roof of the bank is in dire need of keeping it watertight. And, and I've suggested that we have some maintain the windows, but inside the windows with some murals, characters, so you've got something of interest. And obviously Dad's Army characters are always up there as something amusing as you go. Those that know the Dad's Army Royal Trader, so we've got some lovely images that could be easily painted and put inside the windows. But maintaining the signal box in the.
It's on my screen this week.
Well, you know, it could be either of, or something in keeping with the signal box usage, rather than just putting some more not thing in the windows. But again, it could be something that you could get funding for as promoting the town. But, you know, until the rail, because it does, Great Ranglin have got the franchises for that, the signal box sits with that rail, doesn't sit Great Ranglin. So it's a bit pressurized that rail.
Do you know how bad the building's infrastructure is or did you just start guess?
I think it's pretty solid, because it's only recently been called that, it's been used for the last few years where they updated signalling all along that. So it's all electronic signal now rather than set for, I believe that. But it, you know, it's in dire need of the roof thing. So that's on, then we had the maintenance of the Highways England roundabouts. We talked about the appearance of our roundabouts to Breckland. And we're told that basically it ties England, they have structures that are put on there. However, we did feel that the appearance of the roundabouts could be improved and such maintenance that focused on the upkeep. Or reactive or anything that poses a danger. If you're those that go up and down the bypass, I just find it abysmal that our state of the roundabouts, not only in terms of the chevrons that go around the brickwork. It's been hit, dirty, but also the oak branch trees on top of there. And the signs around the edges that have been knocked down. And I know you've been mentioning this, Terry and I mentioned Jack, they, but for years, the signs have been down. Well, why aren't they being prepared? And they are county issue, but because they have but highways in the, they have to work tandem with them. So I think there's a real, because that's the first impression people get of it. Saying the same roundabouts, if you live in Outbar, it's always get hit, but it's also always getting picked. Well, I just feel that we.
We risked and cut all the photos down the Brumwood, Brumwell, but they haven't done anything in the Monford and that's quite bad. We can't sit around it.
So if we're happy to pursue that one.
Here. Sorry, I think the point is that we did, although we still do, we did some money to pay for the partnership managers. And we need to be clear, our wishes is that we want to be able to, because I know that both with Network Rail and with Highways England. I would say two, three. And we does meet with them on a regular basis and, you know, although that needs a lot of big strategic issues, they actually do make a very significant difference. But we need to be saying, we're meeting. And actually, this is relatively win, small scale, they're budget, but actually a huge. So, you know, that's inflated. Needs to be in the front of mind for meeting.
Okay, so the last one we had on here was the water space study. Carry out the review of the water space for the contact key partners to establish the interest in a review, which would include updated suggestion documents. For those that are new to the council, we did. Finance a joint agreement, a water space study back in two thousand and seventeen, I think it was. Which was published, lots of good stuff in there with that long term aspiration of reopening the river to boast there. But shorter term, the quicker penis such as improved portage for canoes around the existing areas, fish passage up and down. Improved footways alongside the river out into the forest areas. So I think that we really need to give this a bit more impetus. Invest money into water space study itself, don't propose to reinvent the wheel. It's more of a review where we are, what has been achieved and what we would want to see in the future. And getting those interested parties such as the district councils on both sides of the river. Got one of north and south, got two county councils to involve, you've got environment agency, you've got forestry, you've got the let, potentially the conduit that any government funding may come through. So there's lots of interested parties, we still need to be banging the drum for us. And potentially we might have a prime minister who's very supportive as well in the future. We should see on that one. But the idea of the water space activity has improved since that water space study is done. So we've got added waters for canoes and that being used a lot more. This end need to be working to both Brandon and here to say, well, hold on, yeah, we're getting some stuff here. Can't, but concrete weird scopes, you know, that's, we're doing a lot of demand things now come and react to it. Thanks.
Yeah, are we still checking phrases or water quality in that area? We are still doing.
And the water quality is being checked from the source all the way down to Brandon. There's different people and different organisations suggesting that.
Wonderful, good. I know we're getting reports on it.
As, as a council, you know, the, the EIA has the law and, and the Keep Britain Tidy people and the Rivers Trust get more, they will go to land.
Can I get them on line then?
Yeah.
I'll try.
So, so since we did the water space, there's other things happen such as the Abbey Estate development, potential improvements to the beach area, things like that. Needs to be brought in so that we've gone on to that document.
I mean, most of what was in phase one, you know, the phase of the scheme, a really large percentage of that has been completed. And it, and of course, that was the bit that had the next step on it. So now that we've done that, we need to go back to the partners and the new partners in partnership and say, so what do you want to do? And also it's that checking, because there's lots of organisations doing lots of good stuff on the river. And we just need to bring them all in and check what projects are going on, because it may well be that that was already been done by forestry commission or something like that. We need to make sure we're not actually double tapping stuff. And because it is a document that is used by all the major authorities to do with the river, they all use it. So it's a very useful document.
So I understand the idea is that we get through GTP office at time from wherever.
Yeah.
Whether it be Breckland themselves or whatever, to work together to update this document.
So I've got a conversation coming up with the EIA and Natural England about other stuff. I've also just started to reduce the water space to lead back to those conversations. And it will be getting us all, I need to go through myself anyway and see the things that I know that have been done lately. And then I need to go through it with different partners, preferably all at the same time. So it's trying, I think it will be till September, because trying to get people together in all this is proving trifle difficult, because they're all keeping on holiday. So we're probably looking at probably sort of late September for that meeting.
We only have a little bit much.
For the summer potentially, for the winter, probably.
So those are the points that Tina, as a result of our meeting with Breckland, I'd like to add one other area. That's really about an update or an idea of our network improvements. Terry and I met with Jack to go now, I'm actually keen on the improved site. We don't seem to have, we have a local county council desktop study and then nothing happens. And there's a number of things that are not within maintenance budget and would like to be delivered, but there's no funding for it, Tina.
Yeah, because back in the day, GTP would be offices from all the different districts in town. We produced a green infrastructure survey, do you remember? So Breckland still have all that, so that's bringing that back. They did an actual green.
There was a green infrastructure as part of the planning process for King's Street. It wasn't King's Street then, it was just.
But there was a whole.
Massive green infrastructure plan done. Alluded to improvements that would come about as a result of extra housing. It was a necessary project for that, that did to get the planning. They got the planning group, but they don't seem to pay much reference to ones that were raised in the infrastructure. Some to that have had network improvements such as the GTP subcommittee, Whitaker put forward in terms of walking and cycling improvements. And again. And again, there's very little cap in terms of that. We've had a cycle lane up across the road. But that's about the only thing of any note that we have had since the building works started up there. So I think we probably ought to have ideas in terms of how the timescale of those improvements will happen. But also how do we identify and prioritize things such as car, you know, the little. Driftway from London Road down to Camry Way Station Road that goes under the bit. It's a heavily used walkway up there. People go to school, we're going. There's no path. Surely in this day and age, you should be able to deliver a path for people to walk to work. You tried to approach walking. But there's no budget, county council do that because they're stripped mainly. So how do we get those types of projects? It is not big enough to be a strategic thing that the planners won't get the. I think one, when they proposed the suit, it was going to be a premium by developers region. To then go into a developed hall to be used for the improvements. As that went through, that was shelved. They said they couldn't sell houses if they put a premium on each house. So we've got no funding coming forward to do any of these improvements.
Yeah, there's.
Also, because you'll have a lot more houses up ahead going down our one or two road. We should be to, you know, make a better deal of it for everybody. Sorry, but you're happy to that one.
I have to go, just one thing on that. And something that we as a G T P board members need to do is to scrutinise the. Because there is some budget and I must, sure as I might understand, I don't understand what amounts of money there are for what and when they come through. Read that. But there is section of the city in King's Street and we need to make sure as best as possible that it's spent on things that we know.
So maybe we ask for a schedule of that.
Yeah, we have had it in the past, but it would manage here now.
We're still good at it. It's a really nice garden chance, like straight forward and use development and.
Trigger points.
And and many of the pieces, it needs a big screen to book it, it may take a print.
We got that shared to all.
G T P.
Now, on the development and everything there. Are there still going, obviously there was going to be a lot of buses going up there and everything and they were going to be pretty much great to miss. They could help up transport for that. Is that still, Nick, that's said?
I didn't speak.
Well, I don't know.
Being a silly. I am.
My answer is I don't know, Rob, no.
Well, I haven't, I haven't heard in the last couple of years about it.
Or anything in.
Can we answer? I heard more.
Anything else we want to ask questions or refer to G T P? Obviously, this is a monthly standing item, so we can consider that in the future.
Yep.
Moving on then to two six two twenty two, the perennial quarry at Barnham. I presume that further has happened.
No, it's still awaiting decision, however Suffolk Wildlife Trust has been back to them recently. And to say that they are maintaining their holding objection due to the current exceedance of critical levels from Monier. At the Thetford East of the signing. So that there, that's the latest.
Okay, noted. Two six three twenty two, create your own update.
Uh, no, I don't have anything extra.
And then anything good engaging on two six four twenty two? No. Meeting others, thank you for your attendance.
As a reminder. Our town council representatives on the Greater Fets Partnership are who.
I'm who on there? Roy dropped doors, I think.